I would like to put in an invitation to everyone who's trying something new tonight with Public Comments, to have a A sheet on the podium. If anyone is interested and would like to put their name down so that we can recognize how many people would like to speak, please feel free to do so. If we could all rise with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father, the Lord, and the which has blessed, one nation under God, united as one with the regime and justice for all. I would also like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of those lost in Parkland, Florida. Thank you. As the start of the meeting, I'd like to read our mission statement, just so that we remember why we're all here. Our mission is to inspire and achieve a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. I wanted to start with a few comments tonight. I'd like to acknowledge and thank all of you for taking the time to join us this evening and to stay informed about the work that's being done on behalf of all of our students. The safety and security of our students and staff must, be, and is our main priority. Creating a safe environment for daily learning and growth to happen requires a multi-winner approach. We are actively pursuing recommendations from our local law enforcement in a concerted effort to provide layers of physical safety and repair classes. You must also recognize that we are committed to the mental health and well-being of our students. In addition to our guidance counselors and speech psychologists, we've also brought back two social workers to our district this year with the hope of a third social worker the next school year. Please partner with us. If you see or hear something of concern, then say something. Reach out to the administrators in your building. The district has also set up a confidential tip line. The number is 860-409-2187. And we have also established a resource page on our website for you to be able to see different options that might work for your family. Above all else, let's all consciously choose to embody, encourage, and inspire kindness. On that note, I'd like to acknowledge our Avon Achievers this evening. So I'd like to call forward Diane Anderson and Jess Chaney.
This term, I have a few words to say, and I was instructed to keep it brief by Diane, so I wrote everything down.
Oh my gosh.
I didn't even let her edit this today, which I would usually do. But you talked about inspiring kindness, and I think that that is certainly something that embodies Diane Anderson. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience this evening that know and work with Diane. Whoever had the pleasure as we have. You know that Avon Achievers is an opportunity to acknowledge a lot of very talented people here in Arizona. And every once in a while, I think we get an opportunity to acknowledge someone who's a real difference maker. And I think that is Diane. She makes a difference in our building every day, so much so that I can't imagine Pine Grove School being the same place in Alamo. I tried to highlight a few things here. If you were to watch Diane work, if you spend a day in the life with Diane, what would you see? And I started with her six knickknacks, because we have a rule in our office that there's a six knickknack limit. And we put that in place a couple of years ago. It's kind of been a joke. But when you moved on from the six knickknacks, you would see a relationship build up. Diane's our first point of contact when you enter Pine Grove School, and she knows everyone. She knows every teacher, she knows every student, she knows every parent, most of them by name, and she remembers students who have been in the school for, you know, years, years in the past. We do a program at our school where we send letters to students who have been in the school as fourth graders, as seniors in high school. And as we go through that list, I'm always impressed with how many of those names Diane remembers, and how many of them actually remember her as well. Every parent in the school that interacts with Diane always has positive things to say, so much so that the PTO came today with a flower and said, "Diane, you've heard about her coming in knowledge," because she works very closely with them. The next piece was just a positive can-do attitude. You will hear Diane saying things like, "I got it, I'll take that," mostly from me, so I don't mess things up. But she's always willing to give a helping hand to just about anybody, and so much so that this year, we did something called a welcoming walk for visitors. And we had an expert come to PGS to give us some feedback about how welcoming our school is. And one of the pieces was our office staff. How much do they welcome visitors? How friendly are they? And how well would they deal with a challenge? And Diane actually fielded a call from a Spanish-speaking parent, and she was very helpful over the phone, so much so that the expert who came to our school said it was the best example of what to do in a situation like that that she had ever seen. So I think that deserves a round of applause. She actually said that secretaries in training should come and watch Diane for days so that they could see more of what she did. So we'll sign off on that. The last piece was just lead by example. And we talk a lot about that, leading by example, being a difference maker. Diane is somebody who, if you don't know this year, we've had a tough year in the office of PGS. We've had a lot of turnover. We had some vacancy. But the school must go on. Things must still happen. Budgets must go through, letters must go out, programs must still run. Diane's picked up the slack and followed that. And the entire school, including, you know, myself and everybody who's here tonight owes her a great deal of gratitude about the fact that she's been a difference maker. So I think that all there is left to say is, "Thank you, Diane. We appreciate your work." She's not a hugger. I would give her a hug.
Congratulations. We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
I hope that the rest of the board will humor me for a moment. I'd like to amend the agenda slightly and recognize Dr. Paddy Foot. I'm going to call you Jeanne, because we've become very close and dear. I can't say enough kind words about Jeanne. She's been such a blessing to the district in a time that could have been very chaotic. She stepped right in, put her boots on, and went to work. There was no, "I'm just going to wait and let things pass until the next person steps into this role." She stepped into this role, and she was our superintendent. So we call you intro, but you are our superintendent. We're going to miss you, and we truly appreciate you. So take a little token.
I'd just like to say that Avon is a very, very special place, and it's been a privilege to be here, and an honor and privilege to serve the community, the students, the staff, and the diversity of communities. So thank you for this opportunity. It's wonderful, really a treasure, and it'll be worth it to be here.
All right. I'm very excited about this next piece. Beth Swibel reached out to me. She is the president of the Avon Education Foundation, and I know the good work that they do. And I thought it was a perfect fit to have her come to a meeting and share some of the grant funding that has been going on in the district. So Beth, if you would come forward and share your opinion with us.
I just want to say I'm very excited to work with Jeanne. I've got these several months of graduation. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to talk about the AAF for a few minutes. Thank you, Deb, for bringing me in. The AAF is a nonprofit community organization. We're a 501(c)(3). We've been in existence since 2004. I see John Boss, one of our all-time grant recipients, and one of our extremely generous donors here, David M. Mardel, the builder since the beginning. So thank you very much to them. Right now, we have a board of 18 residents, and we're always adding members. And we especially love someone to join us who is or thinks they are a Facebook expert, because we use a lot of help promoting and creating our Facebook. Some of the projects we've funded in full and part are in Stick Shell, in the Haysville, in Fort Allen, a book publishing project at TBS from Brendan Lynch that has become a big project. It was a pilot program, and he raised so much money from selling the book that he's done the project now with several different classes. So that's really great. But we like to do that. We like to fund projects at our pilot programs, and then we would have the district or some other funding source take over, and see how that takes off in the future. One thing I like to say is that unlike some other education foundations throughout the state and throughout the country, we just fund schools. We fund the schools and the community. So we're a total community organization. We have funded projects at the senior center. We got them the first iPads. And we funded projects at the library. Most recently, the Launchpads, for small children. And also, there was Community Build Project from Avon Wright Brothers. It was the Wright Brothers Delight. That was a really well-received community project. And it's hanging up in the still of the public library. And we have two cycles every year. We have a fall cycle and a spring cycle. And we have mini-grants, which are $1,000 or less, and program grants, which are $1,000 up to whatever annual you can imagine. We've also piloted flexible seating projects at high school, at Thompson Brook, and at St. Alon Middle School. And we've gotten good reports from the libraries about those, that the students were like those flexible seating objects. The most recent, or the most recent things, I don't know if anyone saw it in the current, but the teacher at Avon Middle School, Jane Sintars, she got about $5,000 for four sets of electric drums, electric guitars, bass guitars, and digital pianos. And she has the goal of giving students more options to help them find the instrument that they could thrive in. And that was that $5,000 that Jennifer Jones funded by David M. Mardel. So thank you very much to them. And the website is avoneducation.org. You can find out more information. On that site, we'll always be supporting board members, volunteers, donors. And we appreciate any input about the work that we do in the community, or how we can make ourselves better to serve the entire community. So this is like a really weird angle to stand on. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments or anything. Two of my wonderful board members are here, Amy Allenmar and Frances Atla.
I have a comment to make. And this is something that I talked to Jay about. And the way I've always loved to say it is that if there isn't money necessarily in the school board budget, ask us. You know, fill out a grant request. That's where we can help. If we have the donations coming in, then we can help supply the programs. And so, yeah, and I know Jay and I talked about that a while. That's why I was thinking of Andy before. So that's my favorite thing to say about this, that we can always, you know, try to look at the budget and look at our budget. And we really are open to a lot of different kinds of programs and projects, but the applicant must be an educator employed by this now.
Thank you, Beth, for sharing that with us. I think it's important for us to celebrate the good work, and we appreciate the funding that's very helpful to us. So I'd like to give you the opportunity, inviting you to come for these special presentation processes. You're welcome to leave if you'd like to be dismissed. Thank you for coming out and celebrating. Thank you. So now, the final order of business. Can I have someone make a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes from January 16th to 2018? All right, please stand, move, or be second. Does anyone have any provisions that they'd like to make note of? That passes. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education's special meeting that took place on February 21st of 2018? Please stand again. Does anyone else have a second? Does anyone have any amendments they'd like to make? So now we're moving into our piece of communication from the public. As you can see, we're trying something different tonight. We do have a podium set up, and I know my height, I would feel very smaller, so I apologize if it feels that way. If you want to stand to the side of it, if you're like me, that's perfectly fine. Mr. Altus, do you have a list of names?
We have one name, Dr. Fishler.
So what I would just remind, that we do have time allotted for you. Come on up. If you'd like to keep it to a few minutes, we're best just to respect everyone's time, and we are happy to listen to what you're inputting.
But there are no law enforcement officers, or security officers at Avon Elementary. What are the plans for the safety of our students who may be in class? Follow the protocol in place, previously ran through the President of the State of California. One, all classroom doors remain locked during classes. Two, shades, other coves, or other covers for classroom door windows. Three, periodic drills to diversify and face the multiple aggressive attempts. Four, communication devices, and other devices should be present at the cost. So I said, I would like to know if the security of our students is sufficient or beyond. Review and carry out, be tested and modified every week. Our children are rightly concerned and want to know that they are as safe as possible in school. Maybe some form of formal communication or update the parents and students would be appropriate at this time regarding this topic. And this was January 12th, November 4th, recent shooting. Take just another minute or so. I want to read to you my daughter's email. It's to Mr. Pelling, Mr. Ma, for the education and for the receiving. As a student at Avon High School, I am very lucky to be receiving utmost level of education. I focus on my study to get and light a decent advance in this country for repeated school shootings. It is impossible to disregard this reality. We deserve to feel safe in school. Not only should we feel safe, but we should truly be safe. I know this is Connecticut, and Avon is a nice town, yet the atrocities at Sandy Hook Elementary School still occur in a town not too different from ours. Twenty innocent children's lives were stolen utterly prematurely. That is twenty too many. There have been reports or recommendations on what schools can do to be much safer than they are. We've always had classroom doors locked, and that's the door window of our school resource officer to be on campus. For all teachers and students to be drilled without the whole situation being taken so lightly. Three simple, easy things to do, yet they are not being done. Doors are left wide open during class, teachers unaware of the danger, students talking during co-ramps, no school resource officer. You can't put a price on safety and peace of mind. I worry about my friends, and they are worried too. But I worry about my neighbors who are only in pivotal. I want them to be truly safe, not theoretically safe. I am a student. I see what goes on every day in school, and it is not conducive to a safe environment. It is the job of schools to protect their students in the best way they know how, which is not the case anymore. In the least, these three guidelines must be implemented immediately in all schools in Avon. This issue should not be taken lightly and should not be disregarded nor postponed. Today in Florida, Valentine's Day nonetheless, it is reported that at least 16 people were dead. 16 young and bright students and human beings won't get any Valentine's cards or chocolates from their parents tonight. They won't be kissed or tucked into bed. This morning, parents had put their lives, put the lives of their precious children in the protection of their school, and it failed. My parents shouldn't have to worry about me when they drop me off at school. School shootings are a tragic reality today, and schools need to be held accountable for their students' faculty's safety. I plead for you to bring immediate change to this problem facing all of Avon's people.
Thank you, Mr. Fishler. I'd like to welcome anyone else who was interested in speaking. All set? All right. Thank you very much for taking the time to share those thoughts. Now we're on to our student representative reports from Amir Johnson and Heather Monroe. Would you like to update us?
Okay, so on January 27th, 2018, the game had occurred, which is an event where it's themed with basketball players, boys team and the girls team. Basically, they have a game with students who play basketball, or maybe accessible. Also, SAT will be happening on the March 21st, 2018, as well as student government recently, in the past two weeks, has created a care package that they are going to put together for troops. So people have been donating those two weeks. And also, as you've seen today, there was an internship presentation with 12 students, and their internship was for the fall, and they covered various areas. I've seen them talking, so you know that the different areas and elements they covered.
My one last thing is that Avon High School's Tuesday night was last Friday, 23rd, and it raised $1,001 for me.
Excellent. Thank you. So as you can see, we're limited on mics tonight, so we're all, just a reminder, board members, just speak. Apparently, the camera can pick up on you, but I also would like people who came to be able to hear us as well, so we'll just have to project a little bit better. Thank you for that update. Now the financial report. Ms. Mashad?
Good evening. There has been a lot of change in our financial status from the December report I've provided, so I performed a fiscal year day lookback from January 2017 to January 2018. Curiously enough, the district during both time periods was encumbered at about $20 million for both periods. The encumbered balance for January 2018 is $729,000 less than the year prior, which means we've actually spent 8% more, if that makes sense. So still right in line with trend.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to have a presentation with an update on early college experiences and advanced placement courses. So if Mr. Pelling could come up, and is Mr. Etlinger with you? Just you? Okay. Excellent. We're happy to have you. Thank you for your patience. Technology, gotta love it.
Good evening, everyone. So I've been invited tonight to give an overview of our opportunities at Avon High School for students who are in college credit while they're still at Avon High School. And basically, there are two different paths that students could choose. As we all know, there's the Advanced Placement Program, which is a program that's been around since the 1950s or so. And so we offer 21 AP courses. Students who take the AP exams will take a comprehensive exam in May, and the exams are graded on a scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest. Typically, you get a score of 3 or higher, and you're considered passing, and schools will accept AP credit depending on, some will require a 4 or 5, and that kind of thing. We also have the UConn Early College Experience, the ECE program. We have 11 ECE courses. These courses are articulated, which means that the teachers will apply to UConn if they have graduate credits in a respective discipline. They can then teach the same as would be required to be an adjunct professor at UConn. And whatever grade they earn in the class, the same grade that they would earn here, also becomes a grade on a UConn transcript. The final benefit of the UConn ECE program is that they get access to the UConn lab libraries and databases while they're a high school student, which is kind of a great resource. You can go into Jstor and that kind of thing, and you can research projects and get kind of high-level scholarships. These are the advanced placement courses that we offer. So there are, again, 21 of them. The ones in yellow with the little, those are the years that we, in the last five years, added AP courses. So you're going to see that that's made a pretty significant difference in the capacity of a school to offer a great many more electives or opportunities for students to earn AP. And the numbers are going to kind of dramatically jump up in recent years. So here on this slide, we have the, starting on the far left, the very bright yellow is 2013, and then it's 14, 15, 16, and 17. So the far-left columns are the number of students taking AP classes. So we're averaging, you can see for 13, 14, and 15, just below 500 students, or 500, you know, students total taking all combined, you know, whatever the 15 AP classes were at that time. And then it jumps up to almost 700 by the end of last year. This year, we're around 750. So the growth is continuing to increase. And then the same thing with the number of students taking exams. It's fairly flat there for a while, and then again, in 2017, it jumps up to about 600. And then lastly, is the number of students who earn a 3 or above on one exam. And again, you see the same result. So things are definitely looking up. Here in this slide, we have the number of percentage of senior class that's taken at least one AP exam in the far left. So, and we have it compared to some of our local area schools. So Avon is on the far left, so we're right at 50% as of last year's graduation cohort. And then the next school over is Farmington. In the middle there is West Hartford, Simsbury, and Granby. In the middle there is West Hartford, Simsbury, and Granby. And then the percentage of the senior class that's taken at least one AP exam or earned a three or higher is on the far right, and again, we're at about forty-five percent. You can see some of our surrounding schools have done a little bit better. As far as the placement overall, when compared to one hundred and sixty-nine districts in Connecticut, we were ranked thirty-first in participation and twenty-second in the percentage of students passing at least one AP class with a score of three or higher. Given that Avon High School has a passing rate of ninety percent or higher on average, and then our SATs are the third highest in the state, I would suggest that, or this suggests that perhaps there's a potential for a greater number of students to access AP. We could look to increase that in the coming years. Having said that, I would also point out that last year, we were recognized for the growth of our program on the AP College Board as being an AP District Honor Roll, one of four hundred schools in the country to receive that award, and it's the first time Avon's ever received it. As far as UConn ECE, these are the eleven courses that we offer, and on the... in the yellow, these are sort of co-top classes, meaning that they are both AP and ECE, so the students will have the option of choosing either credit path. And I think we're also looking to add classes to this as well, and, you know, things like possibly UConn European History, that kind of thing, especially ones that are co-top. So some frequently asked questions about UConn. One question that frequently comes up is, what schools accept UConn credit? So UConn has a website that you can go to, and on this website, you can just pretty much pick a state, click on it, and then scroll down, and then you can pick a college on here. So for example, you could go to Con College. And what UConn has done is they've put one star for kind of not really, two for maybe, and three for very likely. All right, so if you get three stars, it means that they're very likely to take your UConn ECE credit. So for students who went to Con College, you can scroll down and see that they get the three stars. So it's a kind of a neat device. If you went to... let's see here.
I can't see that on the screen, just to let you know.
We don't see anything.
Fair enough. I don't know how to fix that. Again, if we go to Fairfield University, scroll over here, again, the three stars. So that means it would be highly likely that they would take the credits. If you go to Yale, Yale's going to say, we don't take AP or ECE. No, you're going to do all your credits here, you'll get one star. So this could be a guide for somebody to... you could do it for any state from the original map. So if you're interested at the University of Arizona or Cal Berkeley, or pick any school in the country, you can get a kind of a clue about whether or not they're likely to take an ECE. All right, now how do I get back? It's thirty-five dollars per registered credit, so for a typical three-point course, that would be a hundred and five dollars, and then there's a twenty-dollar registration fee for UConn, bringing it out to about a hundred and twenty-five per course. When you compare that to seventeen hundred for a public course at UConn, you can see that that's a pretty good return on your investment for a high school student. And if you do the right courses, you can easily acquire twelve or fifteen UConn credits, the equivalent of an entire semester of UConn credit. You get a transcript for that as well. I won't do the other list, but if we were to open this, you would see that many area high schools also offer ECE. Some that come to mind would be West Hartford. Glastonbury has a very rigorous program. Other schools do not, so this is sort of a choice that we made. But, you know, I think that with this one, because the grading is such that you get whatever grade you earn, that offers a different way that's going to meet the needs of some students in terms of earning college credit as opposed to the high-stakes exam for AP. And that's going to work for some kids, depending on what the profile of school they're going to or that kind of idea. But I think that offering both ECE and AP offers more of our students an opportunity to earn college credit while they're still in high school. Questions?
I have questions. Or no, were you about to speak?
I was just going to ask if there were any board members that had questions.
I have questions. Actually, I have, like, I'm trying to figure this out. We... I think we talked about this last year when we saw some presentations about ECE, and one of the concerns I have is, when we look at different, you know, different specialties like English or science, it almost feels to me, and you can educate me because I'm a neophyte when it comes to educational terms, but when you eliminate history and swap it in for an ECE course, which, have we done that?
No.
So we still have a traditional CP honors available?
In one or two classes, honors sections were converted into ECE because they looked at the two curriculum side by side and said, our honors curriculum is exactly the same as what UConn's doing, so our kids could earn UConn credit for doing the same work.
So for me, as a parent of wildly average kids, I'm kind of amazed that we haven't really had a traditional honors class. That means that some of our kind of more typical learners were maybe really struggling through some of these classes that we call honors, but are actually taught at a college-level pace and a college-level curriculum. So I'm kind of interested in maybe learning more about that as we go through to make sure that we have stuff... we have opportunities for, you know, true opportunities for all kinds of learners. I don't know... I don't know if that's something to consider, but that's a concern.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we'd probably take that back to the departments and, you know, ask for their commentary based on what they're seeing in the classrooms and, you know, determine if there's a need for additional, you know, to restore an honors-level course to, you know, in those cases.
I mean, I guess I wonder how many of our honors-level courses are actually college-level?
All right.
Jack, you're also?
I'm set, thank you.
Okay, Jeff had his hand up next.
Looking at the presentation, in comparison to other local school districts, our participation seems relatively low. What are... what have been the hurdles? What has prevented higher enrollment in these level courses? In addition, what are the steps the school's taking to increase enrollment in these programs?
I think that, having only been here six months, I can't comment too much on what historically has taken place. But traditionally, one of the things that you would look at would be, what are your processes for sort of reaching out to additional students and supporting them as they, you know, sort of reach for a AP class, that kind of idea? And you have to kind of build a little consensus towards that idea. So we've been talking to our guidance counselors, we've been talking to our teachers. I wrote a letter in our Friday Falcon trying to help bring awareness to the community about some of the advantages of these programs. But I think it requires a little momentum and a little buy-in. You have to kind of work towards that.
Are we using things like the College Board's AP potential list that's generated off of the SAT scores to sort of target students and approach them to have them take courses? Have we begun to look at courses in terms of, are there more courses, more accessible to maybe underclassmen versus upperclassmen to encourage a variety of opportunities?
All right, well, we already offer twenty-one.
Right. And I stand, but only fifty percent of our students are involved. So my question is, not so much increasing the opportunities, but targeting opportunities. Say, you know, these courses are more accessible to underclassmen. Let's approach our upper-level freshmen and sophomores and get them enrolled in these courses where, like, physics would make more sense because the skill's needed for an upper-level senior.
So the short answer is yes.
Okay.
We are using the SAT data, which is one of the driving... if you look at it and you say, okay, we're third in the state of Connecticut for SATs for like three or four years in a row. Go back, two thousand and seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, we're third, sixth, and sixth.
Right.
So comparable school might be Weston. Weston has a seventy-four percent participation, a seventy percent passing rate. You know, that's... those would be sort of comparable schools that you could compare Avon to. So we're using the SAT data and the PSAT data to identify students who could potentially take on an AP class before they graduate. I would say AP or ECE.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, whatever path best suits them. But ideally, if ninety percent of our students are going to go to a four-year school, you would want every one of them to experience one sort of college-level class before they go.
I agree, and that's what bothers me, seeing only fifty percent of our students involved in those courses.
You may have worked it.
Yep, thank you.
Jeff, you also?
I'm all set, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Spieback.
So Jeff brought some really good points, I want to follow up to that. I know when you came from East Granby, you had showed us how, and I was involved in the interview, you brought your numbers up in East Granby from fifty-seven students to one hundred and eighty, taking AP, if I'm correct. And our participation here has increased somewhat from, we were about forty percent, now we're fifty percent. But I feel like some of that growth is by adding AP Psychology, AP Government, AP Econ. So our core classes, so our English, Math, Social Studies, Science, and even Foreign Languages, are not increasing. And as you said, you know, for a third in SATs in this state, why are our students scoring so well in SATs, but they're not smart enough to take the AP classes in the school here? And I look at, you know, if our participation went up in our senior class from just fifty to seventy percent, so comparable to other districts that you explained, twenty percent of our senior class, that's about sixty students. And if sixty of our students who are most likely going on to college or something else where they could benefit from taking AP class, why are they not taking them? So it was before your time, you know, that a lot of this was in place, but you did increase participation in those core classes in East Granby. So how did you bring that about?
Well, partly by actually offering new courses. So we added some courses, and we also did some teacher changes. We had a lot of conversations about AP and accessibility because I was coming out of West Hartford. So West Hartford was sort of one of their early adopters of the idea that AP should be accessible to more students. And so Conner High School, for instance, is a great example. They're sort of a... I think now they're even a Dirk C. school, but they have about an eighty-five percent participation rate. And they did it through English Language in eleventh grade, they did it through US History, they did it through a lot of core classes. And it's, again, it's just kind of getting a consensus that students can do this. It's not something that's elite for the elite student only, like your top twenty percent. It's something that the middle student can reach and with some support, with some help. And so it's kind of working towards that. So that's why we kind of started the conversation this year, here in Avon with the faculty, with the department chairs, with the guidance counselors, and with the parents and students.
So through those conversations, as the students have just recently enrolled in courses for next year, do you think the teacher conversations, the guidance conversations you explained, have increased those participations or...
We don't have the numbers yet, but we're working on it. The registration process is...
Because I mean, I've looked at what's happened recently, and our sections are not increasing in those core subjects. So I feel like, as you said, the students feel like it's for the elite, and they're not feeling that they're elite. Now, if we have ninety percent going to college, at least those, if not more, should be able to take these classes. And I'm not sure, you know, what in the school is preventing them from thinking that they're not able to do it.
Are you all set?
Yeah, Amir, did you have an answer?
Yeah, I was gonna clarify some... I just wanted to talk about some of those things. So what actually... it's not... so you're right to your point about, it looks like it's for the elite, but the other point is, for some of these classes, you have to be recommended. So what's holding them back is that recommendation part. I mean, it's not like... I know there's probably a lot of kids who are saying, I want to take this class, but they're not recommended for it. So what do you have to do now? You have to go to your counselor, now you have to override them, you have to have a conversation with your counselor and your parent, why do you want to take this class? So that's one thing, that can be a hurdle, one of why students aren't taking that. And then you... you're talking about lower classes. So I've seen some freshmen for Science, they've taken ECE and Dr. Mitchell Science. Now, that's not true for all freshmen, but they don't take ECE classes. Science is an exception, I've seen. Juniors and seniors can take those AP and ECE classes because they're in a higher level. So it's really based off... what I've seen is based off the grade. So if you're a junior C and you take the AP classes and the ECE classes, because obviously you can probably take those AP, you know, English and ECE, but if you don't pass the class, then what happens is, you got to take it over again because you need that credit to graduate.
And great point, and I agree with you fully. My experience, though, is I also know there are some courses, and the ones I know of, we don't currently offer, but are traditionally nationally offered at freshman and sophomore level, where some other ones are nationally offered more junior and senior level. And I was just trying to get a sense of, we've had a conversation or looked at, when we lay out our course offerings, do we identify, here is the freshman AP courses that should be taken? And... but I think you've touched on a good point, too, in terms of that obstacle, which is one of the questions I asked earlier. What are those hurdles? Because my other concern was finances. Do we cover, as a board, the district, cover the AP cost, the parents cover that? So I know sometimes the cost, particularly if you start taking five, six AP, ECE courses, those costs add up very quickly. But the recommendation, I think you raise a valid point, thank you.
Houston, I think you had your hand up next.
How many students go around you and enroll in colleges directly? Oh, in other words, they say, I'm not interested in taking your AP course, I'm not interested in signing up for an ECE course. I'm going to go attend, like frankly, I did when I was a high school senior. I said, I'm going to go to Trinity. I went to Trinity, I took courses at Trinity, I got a transcript, have a nice day. Does anyone do that?
I'm sure they do, I don't know how many, I can find out for you.
Second one, which sort of Amir raised the issue, and I didn't like the answer, is what sort of approvals you need to get into the class? One of the issues we had a while ago with the remote learning was it required a sign-off from the guidance department, and we didn't like that, and we instructed that that be removed. I suspect it's not removed. I suspect here, when you say that people have to be invited, that bothers me because someone should be able to come in and say, I want to take a course. And if you fail, that's your problem, you may have to repeat it, you may sign up for something else. But I am concerned that there have been administrative burdens placed upon people who are willing to try that weren't what we expected to be placed there when we approved these courses. Can you assuage my fears?
I don't know if they're administratively put there. They may have been put there by the teachers themselves sometimes.
I understand, and I'm not sure that the teachers themselves are that powerful. This is not Yale where they can say, I'm going to teach this course this way, prerogative of a full professor, but here, they do work for us, and I am somewhat concerned that a teacher may say, don't want you in my class, and I'm going to kick you out, or I'm not going to let you take it. I think that's probably inappropriate in a public school system.
I know that we are having conversations about removing any kind of barriers that prevents these enroll in the class.
Can you give us an update in a month or two as a report back on your progress in that area? Because that would... I'm sure it will help your discussions with the teachers when you say, the board is concerned about this, and I have to report back, and I need to make sure that you're on board.
All right. You know, the process in East Granby, and it's going back to Jay's question, for chem... You know, the process in East Granby, and it's going back to Jay's question, for chemistry, AP Chemistry, you had to have a B+ in Algebra II or higher, and it just wasn't necessary to beat that level of Algebra in order to do AP Chem. Any kind of Algebra would have been sufficient. And so identifying those kind of barriers when they are put in place and removing them is one of the ways that you increase your participation.
Thank you.
Okay, Bogdan?
First of all, thank you for your concise presentation. I think the question really is to that, what do you think you can do to educate the parents, maybe the students about what ECE offers? I think there's some confusion about what the differences are between AP and ECE, how it works, the grading, the credits, and so on. Where are your thoughts on that? Clarify the conversation with that.
Yeah, I think working through the teachers directly in their conversations with the students would probably be the first place I'd go. And obviously the counselors, in terms of, you know, the counseling of students. Thirdly, you know, to write it up well in our program of studies and websites and that kind of information, get the information out to parents, make sure that they have it, and then, you know, work towards that and towards when they write us around the opportunities. I mean, it's, it's an exciting program because one of that, I called a bunch of colleges today and asked them about the program. And they said, you know, David, most top high schools don't offer one or the other. It's either AP or it's some kind of articulated program. And so it's, it's fairly progressive of us to have two pathways during college prep.
And there's no long-term vision of replacing one with the other, or still choosing?
Well, absolutely not. No, in fact, I would say we'd love to sort of get to a place where we have both high AP and ECE numbers, and we feel like we're meeting the needs of a greater number of students that way.
One last detailed question is, one of the benefits, you mentioned ECE is accessibility to UConn's library, and being able to get journal articles and so on. Some of those classes overlap, members of the same class, they either take, you mentioned the AP track or the ECE track. You have to make that choice beforehand, so only the students using the ECE track will have access to those libraries, or is it?
That's true, yeah, because they get a UConn ID as a result, and they get at least an AP number to log in, if you will, which would then give them access to UConn databases.
And your last question is, I think you mentioned there's a handful of more AP classes that we could offer eventually.
I was looking for opportunities to expand the program.
Is there a long-term vision on that, too?
That is really done through the curriculum reviews and the department coordinators. So, you know, each year we add maybe one or two, either an AP and ECE, as we kind of move out those curriculum areas.
Okay. Laura?
So recognizing that you have always been here for six months, I totally appreciate and understand that you may not have so much of the history, right? But we've had a presentation at a policy meeting sometime in the last twelve months where students actually came and said to us that there is somewhat of a culture among the students that rather than taking a higher-level class that's going to be really hard, where they might end up getting a C, or even, you know, a B or a C, that's not acceptable, they'd rather take a lower-level class to get the A. So I'm concerned that also, as there's, there's discussion going on around this, I would hope that the students are being included in this. And you mentioned one of the strategies of Randy was considering which teachers are teaching certain classes. You know, if, if there's an issue around ratings and kids are fearful of taking part of classes because they're afraid of getting a lesser grade, that needs to be taken into consideration because it's really, it should be about the learning, not the grades. And I hope that there will be, you know, student input as you sort out and figure out how to encourage more participations. We've had some great opportunities, I would love to see more opportunities for these classes, there's a way to do it. And thank you very much, it was really an excellent presentation.
Jason?
Being patient often results in your question being asked. David, thank you for the information, I thought it was helpful. You included in there the comparison of participation rates of kind of other districts in our area. And what came to mind when I saw that, is it possible to speak to comparisons of offerings, the amounts of courses being offered in other places versus here? Do you have a handle on that, or an idea if we're offering less total courses in AP and ECE, more comparable?
I think that with twenty-one, we're right in there. There might be a couple more courses that might be worth adding.
You don't feel like, in terms of what's being offered, we're right in the neighborhood of other comparable courses?
Yeah, yeah, with twenty-plus, I, that's, that's a pretty robust AP program.
So the participation, more likely than not, can be driven to a lack of opportunity or something else.
I think a couple more that I might consider, CP, DCE, I might consider, but it's not a lack of capacity, it's changing the culture of the school.
Okay.
Thank you.
David, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I'm good for now.
You're okay? All right, Jeff?
Just a clarifying point, going back to the AP courses, the result on the AP exam has no bearing on a student's GPA and grade, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So they can still take the course, not pass the exam, still have the credit they need to, for Avon Public Schools.
Right, they just lose the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Jay?
I agree with Lauren that you come into a position where you don't have the background of the district somewhat, and, you know, at one point, we had another level, academic level, for the, for students below the college prep. And as we collapsed the levels, the levels, we were told by the administration that that would then put us in a position to encourage students who were taking CP to now take honors or even bring up to the AP level. And I don't see that happening in the numbers. I applaud you for the letter that you wrote in the Friday Falcon, and it was a positive message, but I think it has to come from those within the building. So the teachers have to make those recommendations, the guidance counselors have to encourage them, and the students have to believe that they can handle those classes. So that message right now, I don't think is happening. But my question really has to do with, now switching, shifting to ECE. I did a little looking at other districts that offer the ECE, and I couldn't find any that offered both an AP class and an ECE class in the same subject. So example, I believe we still have AP Chemistry and ECE Chemistry. And, you know, in physics or in other classes in English, if the curriculum overlaps, we'll just do one course, AP slash ECE. In Chemistry, we offer both AP and ECE. And my, my daughter's a senior, last year she went through the process of deciding which one to take. We're on visits to colleges, and she would ask the admissions people, you know, what do you think I should do if I would consider applying to your school? And they had no idea what the ECE was. And I know it's, you know, something that's relatively new, but they said AP is recognized across the country, why wouldn't you take the AP? So I think, you know, that's one of the hurdles. They also said, you know, and she explained what the ECE was, you know, she said, you know, this is early college experience, it's a UConn, it's a credit, why can't I have the credit here? There's a bunch of schools that say they may accept it. And a lot of those schools would say, if the course is taught at a high school and not at a college, then they're not getting that credit. And I know there's some that don't agree with that. But I guess, you know, coming back to my question is, I'm not sure why we offer both AP and ECE when I don't see that as best practices or common in other districts, that they only offer the ECE when it overlaps with AP as one course.
I would take a shot at this, in that we overlap when the overlap is there, meaning we've looked at two curriculums side by side, obviously we can co-teach this. So for instance, I taught AP Euro and ECE European History, where the kid's got six UConn credits for about ten years. So that was an obvious choice, that's one we're thinking about bringing here. In the case of Chemistry, when I looked at the two curriculums side by side, I didn't see that continuity, so it wasn't possible to make that integration. So they decided to run both, is that about fair enough?
It's based on the curriculum.
Yeah, based on a review of the curriculum. So what this does is it offers two pathways, if you will, for a student's college credit via Chemistry. So that's, that'd be my understanding. And it's only in a couple of instances where that's the case.
Right, I guess my question, I'm not sure why we do that, because all that adds is a level of confusion to the students not knowing whether they're going to UConn or whether it accepts it, whereas we know that AP is accepted at UConn as well as the other schools. So it puts them in a position where...
I will speak to the second part of that, which is the idea that, you know, colleges don't recognize it or accept it. We actually had a meeting this afternoon at about one o'clock with guidance and the science department around AP, Chemistry, and ECE. And one of the things that came up was, would students be at a competitive disadvantage if they took ECE Chem instead of AP Chem if they're applying to elite colleges? And there was not an agreement in the room about the answer to that question. So I went up to my office and I made a few phone calls between three and four o'clock. I called Stanford, Yale, Princeton, Cornell, Duke, and I tried to get a hold of University of Chicago, didn't get through them. The answer for Stanford was, we have no preference. I explained exactly what it was. It was UConn courses being taught on the campus by high school. They said AP, IB, ECE, it makes no difference to them. They said, as long as it's equal rigor, and we consider it to be equal rigor, that wouldn't affect their admissions. The person at Yale, this was the Assistant Director of Admissions, Graham Harston, said either is great, doesn't matter, the main thing is that students are challenging themselves and demonstrating the ability to do college-level work. He actually pulled out our, our school profile, looked at it, and said, because on our profile, we weighted ECE and AP the same, they would have the same weight as far as getting into Yale. But neither AP nor ECE would count because they don't accept any transfer credits from anywhere. Princeton, the officer on duty, McKenna McKay, said, no difference, weighted equally. It's best for each student to follow their path. The client service representative at Cornell said that what classes, I'm sorry, if they're weighted the same, no advantage. Basically said, how challenging are they? It was the client service representative. But I don't know, five out of five people basically said the same thing, that there was no, from the, from an admissions point of view, as far as getting it on your transcript and getting into school, a UConn course that was taught on campus, as long as it was the articulated course, would have the same weight as an AP course.
So thank you for doing that research, I think that's valuable. I mean, my, my concern is that it took a conversation from you to explain to them what the ECE is, and some of those schools, I don't think, know what ECE is, and we're getting ahead by offering them when they know what AP is. And I know a lot of these schools will say, we just want to make sure you're taking the most challenging offer. And they may have a history, knowing that AP was offered at Avon High School in the past, and now a student is not taking AP, they're taking something else which they don't always understand. Maybe those schools now understand, you explained to them, but I feel a fair amount don't know what ECE is, yeah.
I thought the most illuminating answer was actually the Yale's answer, when he said, looking at your school profile, because you give the one-point-oh to ECE and the one-point-oh to AP, what you're telling us is that those are equal rigor, so we're gonna read into your school profile and weigh them the same. I thought that was pretty insightful, because it's sort of like, it matters a little bit of what we tell them in terms of our rigor in our school profile.
Houston?
I appreciate what you just said and the research you did. The question to me is slightly different, because you seem to suggest it's not a difference in admission, but the difference may be in college credit and transferability. So some colleges say, if it's an ECE credit and you needed it to get out of high school, we don't give you credit for it, we don't care. My undergraduate college really doesn't give AP credit, it just doesn't. If you get a five, they'll think about it, but a three, they certainly won't, a four, eh, probably not. And they'll probably only give it to you one, in one field. So it's very much a buyer beware market. So just because you take an ECE course, or even an AP course, doesn't mean you're gonna get a college credit. So I think this is more of a comment for the audience on the camera saying, look into it, because you, there are substantial chances that you may not get a college credit. It's not gonna hurt you going through the admissions process, but you may not, very well may not get a college credit for it.
And some really great schools do, Quinnipiac takes all ECE and articulated courses. And we were articulated with, and on top of it, East Granby, a community college because of our manufacturing program. And one of our students just enrolled in Chemistry and Algebra II, and she got fifteen credits going into Quinnipiac, so she had an entire semester just through the, our full-on ECE program. But if you're right, it's very...
That takes planning, you need to plan.
And, you know, maybe it'll someday reverse itself, where students and families will start looking at, let schools actually accept those kind of credits, as they look for where they apply. Yes, sir.
You may not know the answer to this. Do you know approximately, just in my courtesy, what percent of our graduating classes that attend College State in-state?
Fifteen, fifteen.
So from my, because my impression is the in-state colleges are familiar with the ECE. The state, from my understanding, the state colleges will accept the UConn credits. You've already mentioned Quinnipiac, that may be the consideration as well in talking with guidance counselors and what is their planning? Is your planning to go out-of-state, in-state? That may be part of that conversation. I think, Houston, you're right, there has to be that question of planning, that guidance and staff have to get on board early in sort of helping students plot out their course, ask them, what is the step day after graduation? Now let's lay out your freshman year courses to get you on that path.
Even when the credit is granted by the college, there's some gamesmanship that can go along with that, too, whereby, yes, they grant you the credit, but it only really counts towards an elective or something, and you still end up having to take their basic course to fulfill a requirement. So I, I don't think anyone should go into this process thinking that their main goal is to accumulate college credit. If you get it, that's great, but it's mainly for the admissions process and for the basic learning to take.
And experience.
You're, you're looking for the actual educational value of taking the course and persuading college admissions officers that you could take the toughest courses that your high school offered, pass those, and that's why I'm such a great student, and you should give me a scholarship.
There's also the added benefit that research has shown that students that take college lower develop greater resilience. There's even a correlation with higher graduate students at college. So there's some additional affective benefits of taking over yours college course while you're still in high school.
Yeah, there are many benefits, I just think of the actual credit to be close to the bottom of the list.
Right.
I have one last.
Okay, Jackie.
The, the recommendation policy, is that a board policy or is that a high school policy? Is that our policy? Is that a...
It's not a policy, policy of the board.
So it's a Avon High School policy? It's a procedure, we think, our policy?
Apparently it's not even that. It may be a teacher-based.
So the board can't really impact the...
I don't know, we could impact it, they may or may not pay attention to this.
But it's not a policy, so...
In the case that, that may impact their continued employment.
In my experience, students, or teachers get to go out and they say, you know, what is a reasonable prerequisite for taking this level of work? What do you think would predict students being successful?
And I think, I think for me, and as we, I know we're gonna be talking about the curriculum subcommittee going forward, but it's almost, and I'm only one of nine, but it's almost like a holistic cultural shift has to happen here, where, you know, maybe somebody with kind of typical kids really, we want to be in a culture where you don't have to reach all of the, you know, jump through every single one of these hoops to kind of experiment, you know? It might be really a challenge for us to really believe, I'm sure we all have a different understanding of what public education really, you know, demands, and really we should be requiring of our district. But, so for me, I guess it's just gonna kind of come back to those conversations that we have as a board with you guys, and, and where we're really headed, and what we really believe holistically about what kind of opportunities are, you know, made for all kinds of different orders. And I guess we'll do that in our curriculum committee going forward, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for a great presentation, by the way.
I just have a comment. I think listening to everybody, what I'm getting from this is, our ultimate goal is to encourage more students to try. And so it sounds as though if we're offering ECE as well as AP, then we're giving even more opportunities for them to try. So the shift is more in encouraging staff to do that encouraging of the students, but not that there's a lack of value in one or the other, because certain students might do exceptionally well in an ECE for whatever reason, versus an AP experience. And there's nothing wrong with either of those options. So as long as the course description gives a clear, I guess, basis of what the difference is between the two, so like in that example, when you talked about an ECE Chemistry and AP Chemistry, if you can clearly define why they're different, that would help that student pick one or the why they're different, that would help that student pick one or the other perhaps. And it is a learning of what your vision might be for your further education, so that you understand what ECE path might take you or AP might take you. For me, I agree with David in that it's more about that experience. We're trying to encourage our students to know that they can challenge themselves and succeed at it. Getting a three is excellent. You're in high school, taking a college-level class. And so we need to celebrate that versus assume that you must get a four or five for that to be deemed as successful. So for me, I'm grateful that we do have so many offerings. It's more that encouragement of take more. But I certainly wouldn't want to advocate for eliminating ECE just for AP, because I think there's a benefit for students to take that path as well. So, I don't know if there's any, we probably want to wrap this up, because this conversation will continue on to our Subcommittee of Curriculum and Professional Practices, but if, Jeff, you have one more thing?
Quick clarifying question. You raised something. The recommendation requirement, is that a decision by teachers, or is that part of the board-approved curriculum, the prerequisites for courses?
That's part of the building decision. That's not part of the curriculum work.
So we don't do prereqs, we write the curriculum documents?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're set. Thank you, Mr. Pelling, for presenting to us. That's very thorough, and I know the conversation will continue. So we appreciate you taking the time and calling the schools to get even more current information. Okay. So now, moving on, we are having our committees and liaison reports, so I'd like to ask the Chair, Mrs. Blay, if you can give a synopsis of what was covered in our first Curriculum and Professional Practices meeting.
Yep, it was a great meeting. Okay, so the first meeting we had, the elementary principals came, Mr. Genie, Mr. Sturm, and Mr. Rankowitz came. We also had John Salerni and Mary Lebowski present about curriculum development. I thought it was really helpful to kind of hear about the focus of the elementary schools, which included coherence between RBS and Pine Grove, how they're really trying to link with intentionality. They're really focusing on family connections. They did talk also about the welcoming walkthrough, and one of the things that they found was some kids participated, and the students said, hey, a lot of these signs around here are so too high that they couldn't see them. So that was something that they can really make real change, so the kids feel maybe more aware of what everybody's talking about. It was really good. They talked about enrichment clusters and how that's going to start next year in a really kind of robust way for students that really could benefit from that. I was very appreciative to hear from John Salerni and Mary Lebowski about curriculum design and how they were talking in particular about the science and the math curriculum. Thought that was very good. I went to the CPDC event. That was very interesting, lots of hard work, lots of interesting stuff happening there. Next week, we are going to be focusing on the middle school and the high school, and kind of learn more about what the focus is happening there. And I'm looking forward to it.
Do any board members have questions for Jackie about discussions that were had? All right, thank you, Jackie. We are sticking to a Tuesday night meeting schedule, so the first Tuesday of every month will be our Curriculum and Professional Practices meeting at 6:00 PM in Central Office, if anyone is interested in attending that. Our next committee would be Finance. So Jay, would you like to give a synopsis of your past meeting this month?
Sure. I don't have much to add to what Heather said. A couple of things are, you see in one of the transfers, we're approving AED, so those will be in all locations, Central Office as well as the college schools, which we could all understand the value there. And also, we discussed facility use funds. And for those who don't understand, sometimes we will have money from those funds that will go towards something within the schools where, in the past, we have helped fund the playground at Pine Grove School or upgrading the tennis courts. So we do have some money in that, and we'll be discussing where that's going to go and some options with that money. And our next meeting is March 13th at 6:00.
Excellent. Board members have any questions for Jay? All right, thank you. Negotiations is kind of special. I don't know, Jason, if you want to...
Special? Fairly brief. We have one ongoing negotiation with the Safety and Security Group. We last met on February 15th for a pretty lengthy meeting, as the members of the committee know. But I think we're making progress. We're scheduled to meet again on March 26th, and well goes well, hopefully we can reach an agreement that night.
All right. And since it is confidential, we can't really go into detail any further than that.
I think I said as much as I can say.
I think so. All right, thank you. All right, now, for Policy, Laura, would you like to give a synopsis?
Sure. The Policy Committee is currently in the process of reviewing the 3000 series on business and non-instructional operations. At the next meeting, we will be continuing discussion of that series. The Committee Chair and the Superintendent work together to develop the agendas, and we are flexible and ongoing. And our next policy meeting is scheduled for March 13th at 7:00.
Does anyone have any questions about Policy?
I do have a question.
Sure.
You had said we're going to talk about fees. Is that part of the 3000 series?
So I had actually requested that we look into policies through CAE and/or Shipman and Goodwin to see what other policies are out there specifically on fees, and that will be something that will be discussed before our next meeting.
And would those fees cover, like, what if we had students that couldn't afford all those AP courses or ECE? Do we have any stream of funding to support those students?
Do we have any stream of funding? We're not budgeting for it.
So they really only take them if they can afford them?
Well, they can take the course, but I think signing up to get the credits is what, taking the AP exam or signing up for the credits would be what you're talking about.
Yeah. So for ECE courses, if a student is eligible for the free and reduced lunch, they will actually waive the fees and award the credits to the students. And in terms of AP courses, it is my understanding that if, you know, it is a financial piece that they work through at the school here and help students.
What's the cost for an AP?
I don't know offhand.
I think an AP exam is $99.
Is it 99?
I believe the College Board has a program where they alter the fee schedule for students who have financial needs. But it has to be applied through the school, and I don't know the logistics on that side of it. Administration guidance usually handles that side of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for that. Now, the Liaison Reports. So Jackie and I both were in attendance at the Curriculum Professional Development Council. It was nice to have Jackie there with me. I've had the privilege of attending for the past two years, so it was nice to have another board member participate. I don't know, Donna, if you wanted to do a synopsis of some of the good work that we covered, and I'm happy to fill in.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I know that we gave more, for me, as a layperson observing, I'm always in awe of what is accomplished in those meetings. It was more delving into the ELA curriculum and how to assess the development of that, if I'm correct. For me, seeing the work and the engagement of staff, you have people that are representing every single grade level in every single building, as well as administrators, so they're all in the same room for the rich dialogue. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you would like to point out about this particular meeting that you thought is an update?
Sure. Just a couple of the highlights. We continued the work on the SRBI behavioral side of the triangle, and the committee had developed a kind of tiered response with suggestions for faculty to use. And we've actually linked resources, so that you can click on a word, say, you know, classroom management, and it will give you suggestions of interventions that you can put in place, so that we will be rolling out to staff through that council. We also spent a little time on going back and looking at the vision of a quality curriculum that the CPDC Committee developed the first time they met six years ago. And it was really interesting to see that what was a vision then, we've actually realized quite a bit of that. So we are refining that and coming up with a mission and vision statement for the work of that council as we start the reviews of the other group. So that was a lot of the work that particular day that we worked on.
Excellent. Yeah, it was very exciting to see that list of what their initial goals were, and they were all saying check off to a lot of them. Jackie, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I appreciated being there. It was really interesting to see how they all do it.
Yeah, we were. So, thank you, Donna. Okay, Avon Board of Finance meeting, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Okay. I was at the Board of Finance meeting, and a lot of their meeting was taken up by their annual audit. And they had the auditor from Bloom Shapira going through the details, and not a lot of it had a direct correlation to us. But one thing they brought up did, they recommended as something for us to consider, a fraud risk assessment for both the town and the Board of Education. And they brought up a case in Farmington that I was not aware of. Apparently, there was a $2 million loss due to a social engineering attack, and basically some world-class Chinese fraudsters managed to convince someone in the town government to make a transfer to pay an invoice of some sort. It was an ACH banking transfer, wired the money, basically. And so what they did is, once they had that banking information, they used it to clean out the account. And so $2 million disappeared. The reason I thought of this, it caught my attention, is because if that ever happened to us, number one, we'd never hear the end of it. Number two, is I can't guarantee that we wouldn't have a $2 million budget cut. And who's to say it stops at $2 million? It could be more. So it's something that I think we should probably discuss in a future Finance Subcommittee meeting and see how far we want to go down that path. So then the other component of the meeting was my report to them, in which I shared some of the information from the special meeting we had about where we were going with the money for the reallocation of the money from the science lab renovations to the security upgrades and improvements, at which point the discussion sort of wandered all over the place, because, of course, they had a lot of interest in school security, as everyone does. And so many topics were covered, including status of the school resource officer and a long list of other things. But in the end, I simply told them that this was coming, and that if it got past the town council, then it would be on their desks. And they were appreciative of that. They asked me an interesting question in terms of, did we want to use all of the money for capital equipment, or did we want to use some of it for salaries? And I said, as far as I was concerned, what we discussed at the special meeting was that it was capital money to be used for a different capital project, but still capital either way. I didn't want to muddy the water too much and get them confused, or worse yet, give them an option to say, no, we don't like that idea. So that's my report.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have any questions? Houston?
I have a question. I have a comment. I have dubious distinction as serving as treasurer of a national organization, and I also do a lot of internet-related stuff. It's not the latest scam, but one of the scams they do is they get a domain name that's a letter or two off.
Oh, yeah.
And so what they do is they send you an email, and they say, Jean Pattyfoot, instead of, you know, .us, it could be a .me. And so you may not notice it. Or the other one that's actually kind of cute and has been played on me several times, and I've never fallen for it yet, is the president of the organization sends the treasurer a note, yo, Houston, you at your desk, you know, can you pay a vendor? It's an emergency. I need you to do a wire transfer ASAP. And if you look behind what appears to be genuine link of what the real email is for the president, it's not. And so I always pick up the phone and I say, yo, David, you think I'm really stupid that I actually accept something this strange that you sent me? Because I have a good relationship with the president, obviously. And he's always horrified. And I've had one this week. So you, I assume, Heather, you would be the mark. And I assume that you've probably seen those, and if you haven't, you will see them soon.
There was also some discussion of ransomware, and apparently Town Hall had not been hit or had not paid any ransom for ransomware. And that was interesting in terms of, a lot of organizations do pay ransom when they get attacked, and their computers have all of their files encrypted and scrambled. What I can say is, working in private industry, we don't pay, is that any computer that was encrypted by a ransom attack would be considered simply lost. And either you have a disaster recovery plan to restore the data, or you don't. But it's gone. The reason why you never pay ransom is that the ransomers, when they give you the code to unlock the files and restore them to the status that they had, also leave behind enough code to run the attack again when they want more money. So you know they're coming back. Your computer's lost at that point. You're going to wipe the hard drive clean and start over again. You can't possibly just restore your files and live on, because there's already, the basis to launch the next attack is already on your computer, and it's going to come back. So there's no pretending that paying them makes the problem go away, because it never really does.
Is that, someone clicked on something and had their computer encrypted?
Yeah, that's how these attacks work. They fool you...
No, I mean, in the town.
Oh, in the town.
Because you raised the issue, and the only time that you can consider the issue is if you had encrypted, you had clicked on the link, and you caused either your server or your, or a computer on the node to be encrypted.
Right. They weren't speaking from the basis of this having happened in the town, but this was considered under the risk of fraud risk, basically, in general, is what they talked about, in terms of things that happen in towns, where these are the risks, basically, are the losses that come from these ransomware attacks, and worse, from these fraudulent transfers, which you're aware of.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Laura? Did you have something?
They've been asking for the fraud risk assessment for the better part of at least five years that I'm aware of. We haven't actually seen a copy of the management letter. Heather, you, I don't think, right. And we weren't named in it. Do you want to speak to the fraud?
Laura's correct. Bloom Shapira, who is the town's audit team, they have been placing, at least during my tenure here, every year for a fraud risk assessment, which, of course, they are well able to perform themselves. But they've also suggested a fraud tip outline, which the district did implement this year, which is wonderful. So clearly, we've discussed it, and, you know, we'd be in favor, frankly. I think it's wonderful.
It's one of those things. It's hard to say no to it, because if you ever have the problem, then people come back and say, well, why didn't you do this assessment? You might have prevented this problem. So it's hard for them not to recommend it, because it's negligent for them not to recommend. And then it's hard for us to say no, because then we're negligent if we get a problem, so.
Why haven't we done it, though? Is it the finances?
Because we don't pay for their budget, and we don't pay for their engagement. That's a Board of Finance issue. So the question is, are we even the right people to address this, too? I suppose we could do it out of our own pocket, but usually it's a Board of Finance issue.
So the Board of Finance, just so I understand the hierarchy here, Board of Finance can allocate the funds and order that assessment. They're not waiting for us to ask for the assessment. It has to come from Board of Finance?
They don't work for us.
Gotcha.
We don't pay them.
I understand.
The town pays them, and they work for the town. We cannot discharge them. We cannot influence their selection.
So...
And we cannot affect the scope of their engagement. And there have been times they've said, meeting with you is beyond the scope of our engagement, therefore, we won't meet with you, in which case our response was, then you can't do your field work in our office, and then we come to an understanding.
So it's been the recommendation for a couple of years for them to do it, and town has not done it, has not followed through on the recommendation?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And Heather's done the excellent job of making sure that we are a continuous...
I would never question her quality, her ability, or her skills, and it's not...
We're aware.
But, my question was, is if it's such an obvious thing to do, I just want to understand what their obstacle is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Jason, Avon Town Council meeting.
Yeah, I attended a meeting on February 1st of 2018. We were well-represented. Dr. Pattyfoot was there, along with herself, Deb, and Jackie was there as well. One issue that came up early on in the meeting was a member brought up the possibility of reexamining the idea of combining the town and the Board of Education finance function. There was no real discussion on it. He mentioned the fact he thought the system right now was functioning well, but he at least put that out there as a possible idea in the future. So I, as a liaison, whoever continues to go to these meetings in my place, you know, I think we just keep an eye on that, so we're in the loop on that possibility and any discussion the Town Council has on that. The other issue that was discussed at length at the meeting, as you folks know that were there, is the turf field issue. Senator Whitcocks and Representative Slapp were there to talk about the state funding portion of it. Not to get into the crazy detail that was discussed there, but the nutshell is that this was initially thought to be about a $5,000 project. The hope was, oh, 5 million, I'm going to get 5,000. I wish... The hope was, oh, 5 million, I'm going to add 5,000, I wish.
5 million.
And 2.5 million was supposed to, in theory, be asked for coming from the state.
They can't hear you talking about it.
Oh, I'm sorry. The mics don't work, but I can, I'm happy to speak up. So anyways, it was.
Well, maybe you should ask A F for a, I was kidding.
I know, it's going to become microphones. So, the gist of this meeting was that the idea of 2.5 million dollars coming from the state right now for a turf field project was probably not likely. The basic, the message that the, that the state representatives had for us was that, you know, if we could get close here as a community and the state needed to bridge the gap for this project, maybe the state would be in a position to consider that. But, you know, the 2.5 million towards the 5 million, probably is not going to happen in the foreseeable future. Some of the suggestions made at that meeting, if the Town is serious about moving forward with the project, was to encourage individual fundraising efforts. An option that was put out there was to write to Secretary Barnes of the Office of Policy and Management to advocate for the project and for the funding of the project. It was suggested that the Town Council consider writing one of those letters to the secretary. It was suggested that residents of the Town consider writing to the secretary. I suppose if we talk about this in the future meeting, we as a board probably can write to the secretary if we were so inclined. There was also talk about the Town Manager along with the Town Council Chair maybe visiting Senator Barnes again to advocate, or Secretary Barnes to advocate for the project and the funding. But, the long and short of it is, that kind of money's not coming from the state right now, so. That's kind of the nutshell of what happened at the meeting. The next meeting is this week, March 1st. That turf field is, issue is still on the agenda, it's old business, but I suspect it's going to be discussed in any detail. And our request for the repurposing of the middle school science lab funded to the security upgrades at our buildings is on the agenda for Thursday, so I'll be at that meeting.
Thank you Jason. Does anyone have any questions for Jason? All right, thank you for attending and taking copious notes.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That was a good one, that was a doozy.
It was.
All right, and now Jackie, Capital Region Education Council?
Yes, I did not attend, but I'm going to, we started talking a couple of months ago about attaching maybe a hyperlink of the minutes for, you know, people's perusal to maybe have Shirley do a hyperlink to their minutes on our, on our minutes. I don't know if we can do that, but I will talk to Shirley and Jeff about how to do that, so that we can get that kind of sewed up in the future.
All right, thank you. All right, next is the Chair's Report. I really just kind of took, wrote down some points that I'd like to remind everyone about. We are excitedly welcoming our new superintendent, Dr. Bridget Heston Carnamala, on March 6th, so just next week. We are having a reception in her honor, right here in the high school in the cafeteria, March 12th, from 2:30 to 5:00, it's a drop in style. The goal was to have all staff be able to attend from each of the buildings, as well as invitations have gone out to community members, staff, so, parents, we would love to see you, we'd love you to drop in and get to know her. She's very excited to get to meet everyone and she's very committed to collaborating, so it would be a good opportunity to come and say hi and celebrate her. Just another reminder that we have shifted our meeting nights to Tuesday evenings, so that hopefully you can just start to remember that on Tuesday night, there's probably something going on with the Board of Ed. So, the first Tuesday of the month will be our curriculum and professional practices, Standing Committee, and again, all of our Standing Committees are held at Central Office, so that begins at 6:00 PM, because it might be a little lengthier with good conversation happening. On the second Tuesday of the month, we have back-to-back meetings, beginning with Finance at 6:00 PM, followed by Policy at 7:00 PM. So again, you're welcome to attend. And typically, our general meetings would be the third Tuesday of the month, but because of the long weekend, that's why this particular meeting was bumped to the fourth. Minutes of all of our meetings are on the district website to keep yourself informed of the work that we are doing. And of course, if you're here or if you're watching it, then you know Nutmeg TV is also a way to access what happens in our meetings. That was all that I had, so I'd like to open up the opportunity to Dr. Pattyfoot for your superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Hoo. So, you have before you the hiring report, nothing really significant there, just filling positions that are vacant, on the temporary positions for the paraeducators are people filling in for people on leave of absence. Okay, I'm with information. And the enrollment report, Pine Grove School went up eight students, but overall, our enrollment is only up nine. So, nothing, you know, really significant and we like it that way, we like it to be nice and steady and pretty consistent from month to month, month to month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So next is the consent calendar, and just for new Board members, if they're unclear how this works, any member of the Board may remove an item from this list and it will be considered in full in the ordinary course after the consent calendar is voted upon. The reason that this list has formed is just to be able to move through certain topics at a faster pace. Does anyone have any requests to remove something from the consent calendar for further conversation? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar or to move it forward?
Move.
Okay, Houston, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jason, seconds. By a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so unanimous. Next is new business, so this is an opportunity to look at two drafts of the school year calendar for the next school year, 2018 to 2019. There's very little that is different between the two of them, so I'd love for Dr. Pattyfoot to share with us the design.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoo. So, I basically put together two calendars and the major difference is the starting date for school. And on version A, the starting date would be the 30th. You did start the 30th this year, however, it was on a Wednesday. So, on version B, it, school begins the 28th. And on version A, it begins on the 30th. We've taken away the professional development day after school ended and moved that, so the professional development days are more strategically planned or outlined throughout the year. And, let me think of what else. Actually, I did poll the administrative team and, basically the building principals, and they preferred version B and so did the teachers' union.
Jeanann, could you point out about the Thanksgiving break, the difference there?
Oh yes, so if you look in November, on version A, you have a half day, thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Hoo. And on version B, there is a day off. That, we do have high student and staff absenteeism on that day, so we do have a difficult time getting subs right across the board, teachers and paraeducators. So, seems to me it would be a good idea to give that day off. Someone had told me that years ago, I guess they did have the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. So before Board talks, I would like to invite Amir and Heather, if you have any input as to the two different versions before you.
I like version B better.
You have to speak up.
I like version B better because it has a full day off on Wednesday before Thanksgiving and there's not too much else of a difference, but a lot of people are absent that day. And, just to start a couple of days earlier, I think that would start on a Tuesday instead of, it's usually a Wednesday or a Thursday. It will give you more time to see your classes and get more used to it before you dive into a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, Amir.
I would also agree to the point, with the school start day being on the 30th, I think we had that option, we had to start on the 30th and then on the Monday, you had Labor Day off. But here, it looks like you start, you do A-Day, B-Day, so you have time to see your classes and then have that break. Yeah. And then, also, it's my graduation year, so getting out earlier on the 12th works for me.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your honesty too, that's very helpful. So Board members, is there any discussion that you'd like to have before taking a vote on either one? Jay?
Yeah, so, at one point, the state mandated, you know, when our vacations were, they dictated how our calendar should be. One of the concerns of the previous Board, and I'll show with what we see here, is the long timeframe from December break to April break. And we used to have a February break. So, at one point, we implemented a March vacation and I know we sometimes like to overlap with the other districts, I know many other districts have an April vacation, but when we looked at it, they didn't even all have the same April week off. The, the weeks if you look at between December and April right now, is about 14 weeks of school. And then there is about eight weeks after the April vacation. So, for the students' sake, I thought it was better to have a March break, so give you, you know, some time off somewhere in between as a long, instead of having that 14-week stretch. The other comment I want to make, and I don't, it looks a little confusing here, but on, on version A, it shows a Teacher and Service Day on January 18th?
I think it's the title. That's incorrect, it should be January 2nd.
Right.
Oh, okay.
There's some mistakes I just noticed on the bottom of it, and Shirley and I were going back and forth on this, so some of the text at the bottom is incorrect. So for example, the convocation would be before school begins, rather than in September to have three, you know, interrupted weeks of school.
Okay, so, we have had that Friday before the Martin Luther King Day off, and I know that was a benefit to students because it was right before exams, so it gave them an extra day to prepare for exams, exams as opposed to having that, that January 2nd day off. That was the other thing that I noticed on these calendars. But, my main thing is, I mean, I just think for the students to have a March break breaks up the year a little better than having to wait those 14 weeks.
I know that Jeanann shared with me that she actually looked at the calendars for all of our surrounding towns and this was really in conjunction with what our towns were doing, so I think you mentioned it was Farmington, Simsbury, Canton, Granby?
Right, so Granby, Farmington, Canton, and Simsbury, yes. And let me just check Suffield, I think, on April break for Suffield. Right, Suffield, no, Suffield has the, actually the following week, but West Hartford has the same week as Avon. So you would be, you would be consistent with Canton, Farmington, Granby, Simsbury, and West Hartford. And typically, when you look at some things that happen in the Farmington Valley, those are the districts that we follow suit with.
Okay, so, any other comments? Houston?
I'm obliged to make my standing objection to starting school before Labor Day and I cannot support any calendar that starts before Labor Day, so I figured I should be sure to let the public and the new members of the Board that that is a firm policy that I have held for a long time.
Thank you for your consistency, Houston. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any benefit to moving January 2nd to the 18th? Didn't we have the four days off this year or was my?
That's what I was just saying, I think.
Right, right, right. That's what I was saying, could we ever move, did you also make the, did you actually say the 2nd?
Yes.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, I was so.
But I agree with you.
Yes, I mean, I support your idea, I like the idea of having that four-day, I don't know why, it's nice to have that kind of down low.
It's a full day. The only reason we did that was because there was a day off and the close of grades on the 24th.
So, it's my impression that our goal is really to vote on either version A or version B versus creating a version C, because these have been vetted and I appreciate that Jeanann also got feedback from the staff as to what their preference is. So if we're ready to vote.
I, I just want to make, I mean, in the past, the Board has always had calendars, presented them, we've had discussion, we've had, able to adjust them according to discussion, so, I mean, I agree with Jackie's comment, I would vote for version B with that change in, in the calendar.
Yes Laura?
Would it be possible to make a motion to table this until the next meeting?
I think parents are really wanting, they're chomping at the bit for us to make this decision.
To then, to the committee, to the committee?
I guess I would defer to Jeanann if that's, if that's something that administration is comfortable with, if we were to make amendments to.
I, I think it makes sense, if the consensus of the Board is to move the 2nd to the 18th, you still have the PD in January and if you'd rather have that four-day long week, or, yeah, four-day long weekend.
Okay, so do you want to make a formal amendment then, Jay?
That was Jackie, I mean.
No, you said it first.
Okay. So, okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Also, I'm just curious about, mentioned the staff, who heard the amendment?
I think that was the leadership of the, of the Avon Education Association.
Do they give justification for some of that or were their thoughts?
Basically, they like the day before Thanksgiving and starting earlier. Getting, you know, having the students in for the four days.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just personal preference, I think the way we've had it so far, past maybe a couple of years now, with the two days before that weekend, kind of eased. Many parents into the school year, allowed for their last minute school shopping, sometimes these aren't bailed from the store if you most need them, so that's just a thought. And just looking at the 28th, that's cutting, you know, a couple of more days into the, from the summer.
Actually, I did poll the surrounding towns, so when you look at Canton, they're starting on the 29th. Farmington is starting on the 27th. Granby is starting on the 28th. Simsbury is starting on the 29th. Suffield, the 29th. And West Hartford, the 29th.
Hey Laura?
So I like the idea, or I would be opposed to, and I like the idea of having the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving particularly because of the cost involved in having substitute teachers in it, but that many teachers are out. While I appreciate and understand that other districts are starting as early as the 27th, I think there is still value in having a few extra days in August, for, especially for students who are away, either, you know, at camp or having jobs. And I know I'm still not clear on, on the need to start that much earlier.
That sounded like most of them, the 29th was the average or the majority. Any other schools?
I don't want to split hairs either, but, I don't know, I feel like, I'd go with Houston and start after Labor Day if we could, but, and I don't have kids anymore in the school, so it's, doesn't affect me, but, it, I don't know, it just seems a little disjointed. And I wish we'd had more time to discuss it.
Hey Jason?
Yeah, I would add the same kind of sentiment. The problem I've always had with this calendar is that it takes five weeks to get a full week of school.
It's hard to hear you over here.
I'm sorry, it takes us a month to get to a full school week. So even though I hear what everybody's saying, well, maybe waiting a little longer to start the school year, I mean, I think having a four-day, even a five-day start in August, you know, starting on the 27th, wouldn't be crazy. I mean, as a parent, and I think even for students, it's, it's a long time to wait to have a full school week. You're waiting till the week of September 24th to have a full five-day week of school. That's a long time to wait for a full week of school. So I'm not in favor of shortening that first week, if anything, I would say we just start on the 27th, but I'm comfortable with the 28th.
So do you like be with the amendment?
I like, I would be in favor of what? Right, with Laura and Houston, I, I like the idea of starting at Labor Day, but understanding we're not going to do that, I'm in favor of be with the amendment.
Be with the amendment, okay. Just the one amendment or would could? You know, if you, the earlier you start, remember you're also, June is also a summer month, so, I mean, it's kind of, you're getting in 180 days in there somewhere, it's going to come at the end, and that's summer for a lot of people too.
We started what day of the week this year?
A Wednesday.
A Wednesday. My only caution about moving it earlier, like you were toying with, is that we're talking this August. I know I've booked my summer plans and while I'm required to be back before the start of school, I question if parents have already booked plans for the summer, knowing that typically we've gone back on a Wednesday. So I'd be concerned about even moving things to a Monday and then all of a sudden, we're going to have a high absentee on those first couple of days. If we were talking two years out, that may be a different conversation.
I don't know that we typically open on a Wednesday, is that typical? Is that what we always do? It's always a Wednesday? No, it's usually a Thursday?
No, we've actually opened past Labor Day.
We have actually done that?
Yes, we've actually done that. And that was about a calendar I got voted for.
Okay, can I make a motion to vote for calendar B with the amendment to move January 2nd to the 18th?
Do I have a second?
Do you have to vote on the amendment first?
You know, really, you just, you just say.
It's a primary, it's a primary motion.
So, just take that as a whole?
It's a single motion.
Right, you just make the motion and say that in January, the Professional Development Day would be on the 18th, not January 2nd.
Well, whoever's making the motion gets to make the motion.
Jackie made the motion.
I'm sorry, I thought we were still, this is work in progress.
No, it's not a work in progress. She's made a motion.
Yes, do I have a second?
Do you have a second? If you don't, it fails.
I'll second it. So, all in...
Point of clarification, the motion exactly is to accept Version B with the Professional Development Date being moved from January 2nd to January 18th.
Correct. All right.
And we can have discussion after the motion, right?
Yes, any discussion on that?
So, there's, there's room for discussion, make a friendly amendment? Or what's your, what's your, could we move the 28th to the 29th?
And then what would you do with that?
How would you add that day? I don't know.
You have to add it at the end.
Yeah, so then that, then...
So, then you're extending it to the 13th?
Which is a Thursday instead of a Wednesday.
And then praying for those snow days.
Can I ask what the difference is? Because we're pushing it up two days and moving it back one day.
Well, the re, let me, can I explain why we do that? You have five free service days, so you would have new teachers starting on the 17th for one day, and then coming back for four days. And then you would have your returning veteran teachers coming on a Friday, and then the two days. That was the reason I didn't go with the Wednesday. Thanks for bringing that up, though.
It was strategic.
Pardon?
It was strategic.
Well, because...
So, B gets us that, right? B gets you the time you need for the teachers?
Well, at least the new teachers are coming in for two days, then they have the three days the following week, and veteran or returning teachers come back for two days, have convocation on...
Monday.
On the Monday, and then the students return on Tuesday. So, that was the thinking behind that.
Just to clarify the math for a second, please. So, we're, Version A lets us out one day earlier with going to, starting school two days earlier. The only difference besides that is the half-day Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Is there another half-day, just to add up to that difference?
No, you just said it as two days. Push the last day of school out by one day, and you have a half-day before Thanksgiving.
That's the other day.
A half-day is considered a day.
A half-day still counts as a full day.
Yes.
So, we could have been, I'm sorry, hold on, but, so, could you, in theory, and we do want to go down the middle, could you have on Version A just changed the Wednesday to a day off and still start on the 30th and make it work? Can you repeat what you said?
So, you want to start the school year with staff and then take a day off for everybody and then come back?
No, no, no. She's already got on the schedule that it would have worked to start on the 30th, right?
Yes.
Which is a Thursday.
Correct. So, if you kept this version, but added the day off at Thanksgiving and moved the 2nd to the 18th, could that be made to work or not?
You'd have to move June 13th to the 14th. You still have to make up that day off.
Okay. That becomes the last day of school then?
And then we're really into the fourth week in June for graduation, because we will have snow days.
Right.
Usually five built-in automatically?
No, it just extends every time there's a snow day. It adds a day at the end.
They used to do that. We don't do that.
Oh, you don't fill in five snow days anymore?
Right.
No, there's just a little italicized bold text at the top over the box. Any unexpected school closings will be made up following the scheduled last day of school.
Because if you, what if you had, how many snow days have we had this year? Do we know that?
Four.
Four.
Okay.
You could have five snow days, and that could push us into actually the last week of June, which I think happened a couple of years ago.
It happened a few times.
Yes. So, Laura, did you want to make an amendment to Jackie's?
I mean, I...
So, I hate to burden you, but I do have a question. Because looking, listening to what Bagan just said, looking at these two calendars, Version A starts two days later than Version B, but only ends one day later.
The half-day comes as a full day.
Because of the half-day. High absenteeism, et cetera.
Right, right. So, that's the difference. I got a motion to call the question.
So...
It's not debatable.
I think we need to take the vote, correct?
Well, you have to vote on the motion to call the question.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
How many in favor?
All in favor of calling the question.
Aye.
Show of hands.
Okay, show of hands, please.
Okay.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, so, now, let's vote on Jackie's amended calendar. All in favor of draft, let me get, let me get this correct, so draft B.
My version, which is what also, you know, Jay's idea was to have Version B, the amendment of moving January 2nd to January 18th.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I show of hands, please, just so we can have a good vote. Any opposed? All right, any abstentions? Any abstentions? Was that clear?
Six in favor, three opposed, correct?
Correct.
And we have to have the names put up. Thank you, we have a...
I did, too.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, now, there's an opportunity, any communications from board members?
I have to say thank you, please.
Hey, Jackie?
I wanted to say thank you, Deb, for the really great opening remarks. I thought they were really good. I think they spoke to security, which I think is a very trustful thing in the community right now. And I think it's frustrating that we can't tell, you know, that not everything is public as much as we wish it would to make people really feel that way. So, I thought that was really excellent that you said those things. Hold on, I have, I have all my notes here. Okay, that was it.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Any other board members? Jason?
I would just agree with exactly what Jackie just said, and also would agree with the compliment you paid to Dr. Patty Foot.
Oh, yeah.
I think you did a fantastic job here with us, and we were all very lucky to have you for the last nine, 10, however many months it's been.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and I know we all do, so, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Now, for those of you who stayed with us for the extent of the meeting, there's an opportunity for communication from the public again. Would anyone like to speak to the board? Come on up. Carol, if you could just say your name for us.
Hi, Carol Shabinsky. I'm sorry, I was late. I missed what you said before, so I'm sorry. It's sort of duplicative. And I know you're going into executive session to talk about security, and I just want to say to keep in mind the people aspect of it, too, which, I know the budget stuff's already kind of been done, but to the extent there's some other additional salary money or budget wiggle room, think about adding back in the guidance counselor at the high school. You know, particularly sitting through the AP and the ECE presentation, which was lovely, but, you know, a lot of it was going back to the counselors should be recommending this, or, you know, giving the counselors a chance to get to know the students to increase their workload. They're not getting to learn which students need a little push, which ones might be having trouble acclimating to the school, which ones, you know, that next, you know, person that might, you know, get into trouble if they don't get help. The counselors are a good resource for that, and increasing their workload just means they're really not having a chance to do their jobs to protect the schools and provide that first line of security, or to recommend that a student try an AP or an ECE class, or having the time to reach out to colleges to let them know, hey, let me tell you about Avon and why this person has a rigorous curriculum, in case you don't know about ECE classes. All that stuff takes time, and I'm not sure the counselors really have as much time as they could have to serve that role. So, thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else that would like to speak to the board? Okay, April, please come on up.
People want, I have a junior and senior here. Follow-up to the presentation, the conversation about the AP classes. My daughter wasn't able to take an AP class because frankly, we didn't have the staffing for it. The class that she wanted was full. So, I think that needs to be a conversation layered on to, if you want more kids in these AP and these classes, you need to prepare the staff, because that's unfair. I mean, she really wanted the class. The other thing I found when I was parent-teacher visits, so many of their classes have upwards of 20 students in a class, which I think in Avon, if you go on the Avon website, it's 13:1 ratio. Well, that's not our experience. There's over 20 kids in the class. So, this all needs to be addressed. I mean, it's wonderful to increase and have these AP classes, but you're going to have to have the teachers. You can't just fill the rooms, because they're not getting the attention they need. And that's it.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Amir, I see you have something you'd like to share?
Yeah, I just want to speak upon, just like the school safety aspect. I know you're going to have a discussion about it. I've talked to students about our school safety, and also I...
You speak a little louder?
A little bit of you. So, I know that you're going into executive session regarding school safety. And as you know, last week, we had a code yellow in our school regarding something that had happened and things like that. And I would definitely speak to what you have said about the human aspect of it. A lot of students feel, that I've talked to, feel like, you know, it's kind of that why now, right? It seems like before, there was a conversation that had happened about interior cameras within the school, which was in 2013. And then, the correlation I'm trying to make is Sandy Hook happened December 14th, 2012. We implemented school cameras 2013, seems like right after that event. Hasn't really been fully implemented and talked about until now, after the school shooting in Florida, which is now going to stop money being allocated to, that was going to the science lab, is now being allocated to school safety. So, a lot of times, it felt like, you know, a lot of people are saying like, oh, school safety is important, school safety is important, but we haven't really seen that school safety aspect in our school. And then I saw something about IDs being shown. One of the concerns that I've talked to students about also is, well, great, showing IDs is great, but who are they picking? Hey, I want to see your ID. Hey, can I see your ID? It's really not conducive, because now you're saying, I've talked to one student, like, they were saying that, you know, some people were going through without having to show the ID, while they had to be stopped and had to be, had to be escorted to the office or had to, from my experience, one time, I didn't have my ID, and I had to have somebody verify that I'm the student at the school. So, keep that in mind, and also keep in mind that school safety is important, and it should have been important from day one.
Thank you, Amir. I think we agree with you, and that's why it does seem like there's an attachment to the timeliness of it, but we take it very seriously, and we are acting on it, because you matter to us. So, thank you for sharing that. I think that, okay, Heather?
I have a question, and it's in reference to what you were just saying, and it's in reference to money and the school that's like, can I come up here and talk to you? Like, you do? First of all, I have to say, I am a parent who, I've got to say, I was very, I felt, I did not, I was not scared that day. I trust this school. I don't like this back door that goes off. I actually hate it. But, other than that, I do trust the school. But I know that people did trust the school in Florida. They did trust every school. My question is, the money. Like, I know we're talking about allocating money, you know, from the science labs, which may not be great science labs, but are they a regulated program? You know, do they need to be followed by FOSHUP? Okay. Second of all, if we're getting the cameras, or if we're doing the field hockey fields, isn't there a form of bonding through the town that we can get? And who do we talk to about this money? Again, and I'm going to say I'm a part of the AEF, we don't have money to do that. But, but, where can the money come from? And I guess that that's what I'm thinking as a parent, like, these are things, we have to do all of these things. There's not a question. Okay? You can't have science labs in a middle school that are not up to code. You can't have no cameras in the school. You can't have, you know, safety at its level, even though we are 53 out of 100 and something, but there's many more than 100 and something schools in Connecticut. How can we improve this, and where can we get the money? So, and is this the right group to be talking to about that? Or should that be done by the Board of Finance or the Town Council? So, and I don't need an answer, I'm just kind of speaking.
Thank you, Heather.
You can do an answer if you want.
But I, I don't think they were, are they out of code or the science?
No, they're not, they're not out of code. The question was to try and improve them, to put in all the additional things that we thought would be a good idea. By the time we got done, we're looking at the round numbers, $1,000,000, $1,005,000. We'd only budgeted around $700,000. So, would it be nice to fix them up? Sure. But what everybody's thinking of in terms of what they would like is dramatically beyond what we budgeted for. So, it's not going to affect the accreditation for programs. It's regrettably an odd-shaped space because it's circular. It was cool in the '70s, but it's not as functional as it might be, with all due respect.
Okay. Okay.
And you won't, you won't get bonding for such a small amount.
But would you get bonding for safety programs?
No, probably not. It's too small.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Heather. It's not meant to be bad.
Well, thank you all.
For Jeanne?
No.
Houston? Okay.
So, $2 million is not too small to bond?
The costs to do it, there are a certain number of fixed costs to do that, so the cost that you spend to bond something is relatively fixed, so you'll find it'll make it relatively expensive. You would want something a little larger than $2 million.
So, typically, they may bond it with something else to get it to the level.
Okay, so we could add a turf field project to, a science lab upgrade project.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to direct us to move forward, since we do have people waiting for us for executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for the purposes specified on the agenda.
Okay, let me just read a little bit more clarity into it, and I will just let the public know that it is confidential. So, we appreciate that you came to hear the meeting, but for this portion of it, we need to have, to excuse you.
You need a second?
I need to read this first.
Yeah, I think, I think we should find out before you read it, who else is coming into...
There's different lists.
No, but you can stay for that.
No, you can stay for that. No, you can stay for that. But I think the names on the list might have changed.